Welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, May 24th, 2023. Present this evening, we have Daniel Enmiston, Vice Chairman, Thomas Chinaki-Clark, Richard Clark, Member, David Durgan, Member, myself, Guy Horn, Chairman, and William Scanlon, our Town Planner, is excused this evening. First item on our agenda is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government of the republic of Canada under our constitutional liberty and express
Second agenda item is approval of minutes from the meeting of May 10th, 2023. We were all present at that meeting. Would somebody like to make a motion for the minutes from May 10th?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the minutes as presented from May 10th, 2023.
We do have one typo we would like to get corrected on page, page number two, under this, under the sixth comment. Mr. Enmiston's name is spelled wrong. So if we can get that typo corrected, I think everything else is okay. Okay, do we have a second to Mr. Clark's motion?
Second.
A little discussion, if I may. We're interchangeable, in other words, in the minutes, Mr. Horn is referred to as guy, and then another point is referred to as horn. Like you're twice here, or your twin is with you. I'm not sure how that is, but maybe if the name was, were consistent, it would be a little easier to follow perhaps.
We all, all set?
I think so.
All in favor?
Aye.
We still have Steve's name on the signature board.
He's coming back.
I'm here, can you even sign it?
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe he wants to sign it.
Ready to step in at a moment's notice.
All right, takes care of that. Second item on the agenda for this evening, A and R plans. First one is Shiny Cardinal on Ramson Road.
Do you want to put up a word in all, or make it easier for you with that?
Yeah, if you, if you can put it like right over by the end of that table, yep.
I don't see it. Which tab would I go to? Over in, uh, C?
D.
D?
Okay. Yeah, there is a small plan in our book. On the tab D.
You guys want to, you got, you good?
I think I'm good with the small one. You okay with the small one? Or if I'm a, or a B this morning? On the tab D? Same one, same one. All right, you wanna explain what's, what's happening here?
Sure. Again, on behalf of the applicant, Shaggy Cardinal LLC, my name's Zach Les, I'm existing grade surveyor for the site. So what we have is the existing parcel for 69 Ramson Road. It's located in the single-family residential, the res 15 zone. And the intent of the A and R is to take the existing lot and just subdivide it into two lots. Both lots are zoning compliant in regards to frontage area access. The existing house at 69 Ramson, it meets all of the zoning setbacks with this new lot line. However, the intent is that that structure is going to be raised and, um, it's going to get demolished. And the intent is to, you know, further down the line, have two new site plans for both of these lots. Again, the lots aren't compliant with build factor. They're, they're relatively mellow as you come into the site, so there's no concerns with access into the site, and then there's, there's no, you know, with the 200 feet.
Should the chair move? Yeah, I know where you're going. Yeah, could you tell us if there's been a demolition permit issued for that building?
No, it has not been. It's just the intent is to demolish it. But it, in regards to, you know, if that never happened, this structure does meet the front and sideline setbacks. It's 33 feet away from the frontage and then 33 feet from the sideline, and we only need to meet 30 intent for this.
Okay, 'cause I believe that that structure is historical to the Town of Dudley.
Okay, I mean, we can, you know, cross that down the line again.
Just so you know.
Okay, no, I appreciate the insight.
Mr. Chairman, to that point, I believe this has been subject of part of a hearing or a meeting about the Historical Commission in the past, recent past, in fact. I don't know what the outcome had been. Do you happen to know for by chance?
I, I do not, unfortunately. I was unaware of that fact. I can follow up with it and see what the intent was.
All right, so it looks like you're looking for two waivers. The first one is the scale.
Correct. It's just to put it at a 30 scale, because it more adequately shows the layout of the property.
Instead of the 40?
Correct, yes.
And then the other waiver you're looking for is a profile of existing grades of the proposed lot.
Yep. Again, because 69 does already have driveway access, so you know it's accessible. And then this new proposed lot one, it, you know, only drops about three feet up to, you know, about 100 feet back, so there's more than adequate means of getting into that property.
So the new lot, the intent is another residential.
Correct. I mean, as, as far as I'm aware, I can't speak for, you know, I can't speak for the applicant of that, but it is a zoning compliant lot for residential.
Okay, so let's vote on the waivers first. Would somebody like to make a motion to waive 6B and 6I? 6B being the scale of the plan from one inch equals 40 feet to one inch equals 30 feet. And six, oh, sorry, yeah, it's J, not I. 6J, a profile of existing grades. And this is for 69 Ramson Road, Dudley, Mass, D book, 68723, page 379, Dudley tax map, 215, parcel number eight.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? Okay, now we would be looking for a motion to accept the A and R plan of land for 69 Ramson Road, Dudley, Mass, D book, 68723, page 379, Dudley tax map, 215, parcel number eight.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the A and R plan as presented for the 69 Ramson Road.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? I think we have to sign three paper copies and one MyLok.
Two paper copies and one MyLok.
Three?
Three now?
We just, well, especially MyLok, don't we?
Yeah, marker, Sharpie.
Want to put the paper ones over here, so we get two lines going?
Yep. That's what we did on the last few.
I'll go anyway.
Takes care of the first A and R plan. Second A and R plan is Sawmill Road, Steve Watrova. Under the tab B?
Watrova? Hi, gentlemen. Steve Watrova, 22 Lawrence Road, Dudley, representing Sawmill Road LLC regarding 35 Sawmill Road. Uh, thinking the agenda that calls this an amendment, essentially what this is, is this is exactly the same A and R plan that was approved two weeks ago with one change. The attorney in the process of working on a purchase and sale agreement, he suggested that we have the drainage easement that is going to be part of the subdivision shown on the A and R plan. So it wasn't shown on the first A and R plan. So I actually have the, the one from two weeks ago right here. And if you put them side by side, the only difference is, you'll see there's a 30-foot wide easement that we added. So in our discussion with Bill Scanlon, since we had not recorded this plan yet, his recommendation and the attorney's recommendation was it would be a much cleaner process if I just resubmit it all over again. So I essentially did another Form A, another checklist, another application fee.
So in looking at your checklist here, there's no waivers requested?
There should be two on there. It's the same two waivers we requested last time, though. The driveway, uh, it's, it's, forgive me, Mr. Chairman, you probably know better than I do, it's the two that we tend to waive often when it's not a question of a-
Profile of existing grades?
Yes.
And the other one, do you remember?
Oh, yeah, yeah, right. One right here. Where is it?
I think so. Yes, it says May 4th. Yeah, May 4th, has everything checked off. Sawmill Road.
I've got the, the original, it was like eight years ago.
Yeah. That's what the subdivision was.
Two. Topography, man.
Yeah, May 4th says they're all checked off.
Is the topography on the plan, Steve?
No. No, so it was probably topography and...
It's driveway. I think driveway is the other one, right? Yeah. Driveway profile?
That's it, yeah, driveway profile.
Whether the road, the driveway is gonna be on.
Right, 'cause the driveway is gonna be on the new way.
So E and J, okay?
Under six.
Yeah. All right, I just, I just put the W's in on this one.
Thank you.
So can we see the, can we see the new plan?
Yep.
That would help, huh?
Yeah. Just to refresh our memories. Put the MyLok on the table.
Well, I don't want to mix it up. We'll move all of that together. All right, we're up here. That's all right with you.
Drainage easement runs, it's 30-foot drainage easement runs parallel to Sawmill Road across the front of the lot.
Correct.
If you want, in comparison, this is the one from two weeks ago. So the only, the only thing we added was this, this easement. All of the lot lines and everything, that's it.
What's the drainage easement gonna be used for?
The runoff from the new way. Stormwater management.
If you had to put in a system or a detention base?
All of that will be covered in the subdivision application. We have all of the engineering to show that that's gonna work, and then it'll obviously go before peer review and, you know, we wanna hear what Jeff has to say about it.
Is that wall staying there? I don't remember.
Yeah, actually, I wanna try and fix, there's actually a hole in the wall now from, I don't know, there must've been a cart path or something that went through there a long time ago. I'm actually hoping to take the stone from where we opened it up for the new road and move it over and complete the wall. This is not a scenic road, so there's no, there's no, uh, the walls aren't protected like a scenic road.
So we're looking for waivers on 6E, topography, and 6J, profile of existing grades. And this would be for an A and R plan of land for the owner of Sawmill Road LLC, 35 Sawmill Road, in the Town of Dudley, under tax map 113, lot number 65.
Chairman, I would move that we waive 6E and 6J as indicated in the A and R plan, Sawmill Road LLC.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? Would somebody like to make a motion to accept the A and R plan of land for Sawmill Road LLC, map, tax map 113, lot number 65?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the A and R plan for Dudley tax map 113, parcel 65, as presented.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Four one.
Guess we gotta sign three paper copies and one MyLok.
Let you get by. No. Yeah, waivers are okay, the topography and driveway. Yeah.
Oh, it's right here. Yeah, I brought four copies.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we're a little, little bit late, but we have a, a 7:15 continuation of a public hearing for a modification of a previously approved site plan at 35 to 37 Chase Ave. Go back to that.
Hello, Frank McPartland from Dillison Roy, representing the applicant DMA Holdings. I guess the, the biggest development going forward right now is the receipt of a, a water sewer peer review letter from Ty and Bond. The letter was dated May 9th. I received it myself, I think, the middle of last week. With it being dated May 9th, it, of course, missed the Water Sewer Commission meeting cycle. So we, I haven't heard what their thoughts on, on the letter was yet. Given that I'd been waiting for this peer, peer review and had continued to meet the, the past meeting with the, the planning board, I'd wanted to come in and at the very, very least, see if you had any discussions on this, or to find, or to see if it was completely pre, premature to discuss anything with the planning board in advance of any comments from the Water and Sewer Commission.
I'd have to say that, yeah, we, we would want to, I mean, we're not, you know, we're not the Water and Sewer Board.
Correct.
But we wanna work in conjunction with them, so.
Yes.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't approve anything unless they were happy with, you know, unless you had an agreement with them that they were happy with.
All right, and that, that, that's certainly understandable. And if that, that, that's the case, I would happily not waste any, any more of the board's time tonight on, on this, if, um...
Let me just ask, are you, after reading this, this report back from Ty and Bond, are you, are you agreeable to everything that you're proposing in this?
Their, their findings of the condition of the water main in Chase Avenue, that, that's as it was presented to me by the Water and Sewer Commission, so there was no surprises in, in that.
Well, I have a couple of questions, but I'm gonna wait till the Water and Sewer Department does their meeting.
Business and over in our business.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if that's okay with you?
Yeah.
You wanna be on the next, on the next meeting agenda?
Yeah, that would be, um, June 14th, I believe.
It's next year. Amanda?
Yeah, I think so. Well, can we put him on next meeting? If the Water Department doesn't come up with something, we can extend that.
Yeah, we can, we can put you in for the next meeting.
Yep, and then at very least, it would hold a slot. Hopefully I'll be able to talk to them at their, I think their next meeting would be June 7th.
That, that sounds good to us.
Um, all right, um, with that being, being the case, I'd like to ask the board for a continuation. All right, thank you. Thank you.
We go into our summer schedule. Is that the end of May?
Usually it's like, no, usually the summer schedule's like July and August.
July and August.
Looks better than September.
The dog days.
I would, would delay, July, August around.
Let's see how it goes. Okay, so the next item on our agenda for this evening is permission of a subdivision plan on Sawmill Road and scheduled date for a public hearing, Steve Watrova.
Thank you.
Thank you, Guy.
Good evening. Again, to the board, Zach Les from Existing Grade with Steve Watrova for 35 Sawmill Road. And then... So again, this is kind of in conjunction to the A and R that you had just reviewed. This is a closed subdivision plan. I believe you guys are all pretty familiar with this project at this point. I know it came before you, not that long ago, so we've been working on getting our engineered site plans together, going over to Graves Engineering for their peer review. But again, the, the purpose of the meeting tonight was to present this to the board. I, I understand that the way these normally work is that we would get the comments back from peer review, we would address those, and they come before the board, but at this point, I was, you know, ideal, I'd like to see if we could even have some sort of discussion amongst the board of any sort of concerns or comments. of any sort of concerns or comments that they, you guys may have, so we can try to do one comprehensive plan submission as opposed to kind of piecemeal this way through the, the permitting process. But again, I, I can kind of go through it. If you just, the A and R that you guys just reviewed with the easement put on is, is this lot right here. Um, I believe you have seen previously the additional four lots that would be going in with the proposed sub, subdivision road. So again, we've gone through, we've rated out the site, we've put, put our drainage features in here. This is in regards to that drainage easement you just reviewed up front. We're going to have a rain garden up there. We have a rain garden in the center of this turnaround that's going to be going in here. You know, if, if this project has to go for the Sewer Commission for the extension of the sewer line, that would be proposing to go up to service these lots up here, and again, that's a discussion to have with them. And then we'll come back to you guys and kind of get your input on it as well, but, you know, I guess in, in the grand scheme of things, that's kind of where this project stands right now. Um, I know you're probably not going to have too many comments or concerns at this point, but...
I mean, we're, we're going to be dependent on our consultant town engineer, Graves, to go through every, all the, all the drainage calculations and make sure that everything's going to work the way it's proposed and basically depend on his expertise and comments.
The main thing is the, the drainage is, is what, you know, we were talking about, to make sure that that's going to work. Everything else is, as we had previously discussed at my preliminary application, the lot sizes, the, uh, the, the waivers that I was asking for in reduction in width of the right of way, width of the paved area. There is a gravel walkway to the right as was recommended for, uh, kids if they're going to be coming to the bus stop or that kind of thing. So we took that into account. So I think we addressed everything except for the big question is the stormwater drainage, which obviously we welcome the peer review.
So is your, is your plan to formally submit it tonight and then we would send it out for Graves' review, or?
Yes. Yeah, we, we know that because of the emergency with Bill tonight, we could just, if you wanted to say, uh, the meeting date to be determined.
Yeah, so, because I think we got to give, I don't know what Graves' schedule is, if he can get it back, all the comments back to us in two weeks or if it's going to take three weeks, and if it takes three weeks, then we got to go four weeks out, so.
Oh, yeah, and, and, you know, if, I, I don't know if two weeks is fine or not, but like I said, a, a to be determined, because I know that he has to take his time review, and I, I know Jeff, he's very thorough and always very agreeable with all his comments. Um, so, but again, once we get that back, we need a, a couple of days on our end just to address those and then we submit it to the board and then kind of go from there with it.
I mean, do you, do you tentatively want to be on the schedule for four weeks out?
Yes.
Put you down for four weeks out? And, uh...
He said four lots. Are, are they going to be just the three lots and that?
Why does it look like five?
This, this is this existing A and R lot, and then this road would be servicing for these four lots here. And then again, the intent for discussion would be for this A and R lot, that if we would be able to provide access onto this new road from it or not, but... Again, it's, in theory at this point, Meryl, I guess, for semantics, it's a four lot subdivision.
Yeah, but technically all houses are on that lot, on that road. So, like, what is it for? And you need water management system?
Well, I mean, it, it, you know, the way that I designed these things.
What Graves said on the last report. So why don't we just submit it to Graves and not even get into it?
And, and, you know, to, to, to be frank about it, even if it's a three lot subdivision, I'm still going to design everything to a, you know, typical subdivision, because I don't want, I don't want to be getting a call in ten years and somebody's getting flooded out, so I design these things to not have that happen. But again, we'll let Jeff, I'll kind of put his, his input on that.
Okay, so then you would be, you would be making your submission tonight and we would be scheduling it out to, so it would be the last meeting in June, which is, do you have a calendar, Mr. Clark?
Uh, let's see, my calendar.
June twenty-second. June twenty-second, it says. No, this is two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, that's not going to work. Two thousand twenty-two as well. Um, I don't see one for...
How about on your phone?
It's a twenty-eight.
The twenty-eighth?
Yep.
Twenty-eighth of June.
It'll be that Wednesday.
All right, so, yeah, we scheduled the other gentleman for the fourteenth of June, so you'll be the twenty-eighth. We can put it down at seven fifteen.
I, I, I believe that'll give everybody enough time, again.
Does it go to Water and Sewer first or Jeff first?
It's going to go to Jeff first. I mean, are you, are you, are you also making a submission to the Water and Sewer simultaneously so that you can?
Yeah, we, I have already, I'm already on the agenda for Water and Sewer next week, next Wednesday.
So they'll be, they'll be getting a look at it, too.
Yeah, correct.
By the time it comes back to us, we should have Water and Sewer.
And I actually already brought the preliminary to them. You may, may or may not recall, but at the last meeting that I was here about the subdivision, I actually produced a letter from the Sewer Department stating that I would have the ability to document.
Okay. And is the, is the plan for there to do, um, uh, private wells and sewer?
Yeah, it's private wells and public sewer, and the reason for the private wells is because we're over, we're like over twelve hundred feet away from the nearest water line, so.
Do water wells?
A well. Yep, and I have a meter on my well, so that they know how much to charge me for the sewer.
Okay, so then that's, that's what we'll do. We'll, we'll accept it as a formal submission.
Okay, perfect.
We got you on for the twenty-eighth, and we'll be waiting for Jeff Walsh's comments and, uh, we'll get some confirmation from Water and Sewer that the, that the sewer plan would be.
Okay, perfect. We go from there with that, so.
Okay.
Appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Be continued.
Okay. We've got on our agenda, standard business, discussion and status report on permission and construction of and acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets, including Pearpon Estates, Rocky Hill Estates, Country View Estates, Eisenhower Drive, Golden Farm Estates, Lion Estates. So I think, if we look in our book here, under tab, tab D, we should have a completion extension request from Lion's Estates. They'd like to extend their completion time till June of two thousand twenty-four, so I'm guessing their, their covenant is running out in June of two thousand twenty-three, so it's looking like they would like another year for that, for that subdivision. It's under B, it's also under E also. There's two copies in my book. I don't know if it's the same here or not.
I think I've got one here under E, and I don't think I have one under D, so.
Yeah, I got one under each. So...
All those lots are being leased in already, right?
They're all released, yeah. He's, he's working on them. They're not, I would say it's about ha, I was up there last month. It looks like, looked like it was probably about halfway built down.
I think there's only two house, two house lots left, uh, not built on. The rest of the house?
I think it's more than that.
I think it's three.
I think there's more than...
Three or two. No, they're all up.
Really?
Yeah.
A month ago when I was there, there was, there was probably, it was probably five or six house lots that weren't built down.
They're almost all up.
All right. Well, this, what's the board's pleasure? Would we be willing to extend it for another year?
How about all the issues we had over there? Send it?
We can call them in and talk to them. I mean, like...
But that one's all right. That one's not too dirty, is it? That one we're talking about?
Well, that's, that one doesn't have the berm, so the water from, the water washes the dirt out from the, from the lots onto the road every time it rains, and, I mean, he's been sweeping it up, but it's still, it's still...
Still an issue?
Still kind of messy, but...
Oh, maybe we need to ask him to come in and we should address that issue. I got a funny feeling that if we approve this as is at this time, it's going to be business as usual for him going forward.
Yeah, maybe he can come in and be like, hey, well, why all these hay barrel rolls going down the side of the road?
The other thing is, um, if you remember at the beginning, um, there was discussion about where he cut for the Water and Sewer connections in Lion's Road, that he was supposed to cut a large portion out and repave it. He, he just cut a trench and left it, so.
He repaved what he, he's only legally required to.
He agreed that he was going to, he was going to pave the width of the road for, for the entrance of the...
I don't know how that contract went, but...
But I mean, he's not done the final course yet, so we have to just maybe remind him about that.
I think he argued about that.
I think he did, I think he did too, but what I think, I think what he promised, if we went back and looked at the tapes, was different than what he did.
I wasn't here at the time, so.
All right, so what's the, what's pleasure? We ask him to come in at the next meeting? I think he'll still be within, if, if our next meeting is, is June fourteenth, I think he'll still be within, uh...
See, Ron doesn't expire until the twenty-sixth, does it?
The end, the end of June, I would say, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think it'd be a good idea, if nothing else, you to put this off until the next meeting, give it a very chance to get out there and look around and head out there for a while.
Yeah, there's only a couple of lots left. He must have built quite a few houses in a month.
Yeah, the little tiny houses.
But it's also not a bad idea to ask him to come in.
I don't know, this isn't, this isn't, uh, this is Lion's Road. This is the one down on...
Yeah, next to the courthouse.
Yeah.
Beans. Yeah, one from Colonial's, like, little forty by twenty, one level.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Wow, that's a change.
Yeah, that's...
That's why I do...
I wonder how those old neighbors let that property drop.
Okay.
I think that's worth a drive-by.
All right, yeah, so let's put it on the next, next agenda then.
Should we ask him in or we just do a drive-by?
Yeah, ask him in and we'll, we'll all take a look at our...
I'll go take a look at it.
At our leisure, yeah. Okay.
It does sound like it's, something's changed there, that's for sure.
Okay, so we'll, we'll invite him for the next meeting and we'll take a look at it. Um, so that was, uh, one. I have nothing to report on Eisenhower Drive. I haven't honestly had a chance to get, try to get back in touch with Mr. Clark. I, I will try. That's one of the estates. Pearpon Estates. I think we have a letter in here from Pearpon Estates about the lender agreement.
Yeah, some money released, so I'm just...
This is under tab F in my book. So basically what this agreement is, is, um, terminating the letters of credit for the sureties that were in place with, uh, various financial service companies, placing them with cash. The developer is willing to do this. Honestly, I think it's a better situation for the town to be in rather than having to deal with a third party, so.
Really wholeheartedly, Mr. Chairman.
Let's go to like legalized counsel or is this just legal?
Go through the treasurer and everything. I mean, it's, as, as, as long as the dollars and cents come out to the same. I mean, if you have, if you have a letter of credit for forty-three thousand, or what is it, forty-seven, forty-six thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and twenty cents, or you have an account with forty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars, it's the same, it's the same thing. But at least if the, if the town is holding the money, uh, there's, there's no worries if something goes wrong with the, with the subdivision or the developer, that the town has the money to finish what they need.
Yeah, letters of credit go with Golden Farms.
Yeah.
They're half a cash.
Is this the right page in which we, uh, we'd sign on this? Or is it, uh, I'm missing something. But, uh...
Why would we sign it? Isn't that something that the tr, uh, treasurer would be signing?
Right.
Yeah, well, that was my question, like...
So, the applicant did not sign in, so until the applicant signed in, Bill's instructions are to just press it out and then give it to you guys. Once we get the applicant's signature, then you guys can see the...
All right, because I think that the online version of this had a second page for signatures. Is that correct?
Yeah, can we get a receipt or something? Yeah, it was a receipt from the treasurer.
Tony hasn't signed, so we don't sign.
Could we just have a straw poll of the board? Is everybody in agreement that this would be a good idea? All right, so...
I, I honestly, I think it's a lot better for the town to have the money in hand and try to go through whatever hoops and hurdles.
We're in agreement with this, but we're going to wait until, until the applicant signs off and then we'll make a formal vote on it. So it'll probably have to be in our next agenda also. Okay, back to the agenda. I think that ends the first part of standard business. Second part, inspections, uh, Legacy Landing Country Club Acres, Seaport, J D and B, um, and Stevens Mill. I can tell you that I took a ride through, um, Country Club Acres tonight before I came here, and I was very surprised that a lot of stuff was cleaned up.
Yep. It's gotten, it's a lot better than it was.
Yeah, so, um, uh, and Bill told me that Jeff, uh, Jeff Murray had gone out there and talked to the, and talked to, um...
Yeah, I made a name of Russ's pretty much.
Yeah, I forgot, I forgot the guy's name. Mr., yeah, he talked to Mr. Haynes, and Mr. Haynes was supposed to be here tonight, but he had to cancel. But, uh, he said that Mr. Murray was happy with the, with the progress so far. So I, like I said, I was able to drive through, navigate, no problem. They still have the issue with that one, with the one, um...
Hole.
Hole in the ground, but it's covered with a steel plate with two rocks on top, so I don't think there's any fear of anybody falling...
Nobody's going to move that easily, that's for sure.
I think that's a, a much better situation.
Yeah.
Um, there's nothing in our books, number three decision for Nichols College Townhome Projects.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if we may go back to Legacy Landing, I do, I, I think they were looking for an extension and we were holding on that and pending some indication of improvement there. So I'm not sure whether, what their date is, but I think it was coming due this month.
There's nothing in my book for them. Is there something in your book?
Yes, I think you're, right, Mr. Clark. Give them this meeting, this is coming now.
Amanda, do you know if there was an extension filed already for, for Country Club Acres?
I don't have it.
Okay.
I believe that's how they came, that came to us on the agenda for the last meeting.
Right.
It was a request for an extension and...
So why don't we, why don't we see if we can have them on the agenda for the next meeting also? So we'll ha, we'll have Lion's Estates and we'll have Country Club Acres. For the next agenda.
Wait, I've got something right here.
Is it in a minutes?
Probably the old one.
Yep.
Yeah, he's looking for an extension to complete, uh, at the end of this year, uh, twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. James Hayne, Paige Hayes, this one, signed off on this. You guys still want to wait, have, come in just to talk to him?
Um, no, if you're highly superintended, I'd give you a letter, right?
I don't have the letter.
You don't have a letter or nothing?
I just have verbal confirmation from, from Bill that Jeff Murray went out and said he, he had made a lot of progress.
All right, so there should at least be a report from Graves, then?
Not from Graves, from Jeff Murray.
Jeff Murray, okay, Jeff Murray.
Yeah, I mean, if we had an email or something, did you get an email or something from Jeff Murray?
So just as, uh, we had some problems out, or some issues, complaints about what was going on out there, no action was taken. He's coming up for, asking for renewal. We dug our heels in the sand and said, wait a second, clean things up first, and that is forcing him to react. I think it'd be a good idea to get him in here and face to face, have him promise that he's going to keep it good going forward. Not ju, I mean, granted, missing something from Mr. Murray's, it'd be great to know everything is good, but for the future, it'd be nice to have some kind of a verbal promise.
Put him on the next meeting.
Yeah, put him, put him on the next meeting. Thank you. Okay, uh, number three was re, uh, review decision for Nichols College Townhome Project. I haven't heard anything about that, no, so. The last we heard from the planner, it was still not, uh, through the, through the registry of deeds, yeah.
It seems to be taking it off of the... How long do they have?
Planner's plate. Um, I don't, I don't know. Has anybody been up there to see if they're doing anything?
Uh, I did, yeah. I think it was last week I went up there. There's still a sign up there on the field, but there's nothing that's been done.
Construction, uh...
Lower movement.
It looked like anything had been done.
Okay.
The parking lots are pretty much empty. The kids have gone.
Okay.
Now, can they do anything until we approve them or until that debo's through?
I mean, we, we voted to approve it, but we haven't signed off on it, so.
No.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Bill's not here, so there'll be no planner's plate. Any comments from the planning board?
Everything good.
Okay. Uh, comments from the audience?
Next meeting, June fourteenth.
Next meeting's June fourteenth, yeah. Um, was there any approvals for consultant vouchers or payments that needed to be made? No.
Mr. Chairman, it is my pleasure to make a motion that we adjourn at this early hour.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Good night.